Benton County County Council, now it's there. Call that the board chair.
Our invocation tonight will be given by Commissioner Hill from the 5th District.
Les Bowe, dear heavenly father, thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for bringing us together in order to conduct the business of the county. And may our words and actions be pleasing in your eyes and may your will guide our thoughts and deeds. And please place a special hand over the Lashley family as they have suffered a loss. And when our business is concluded today, please see us all safely home to our families. We ask this in your son's precious name. Amen.
Commissioner Stokes from the 1st District will lead the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What is that? Is he fixing that? You fixing the noise?
Yeah, it's a totally different problem.
Okay, on the agenda, we're ready for roll call, please, by Madam Clerk. Everybody, please press at your present. Angie Hearn, Ward Plant, Rocky Preston, Norman Frazier, all absent. We have quorum. Fourteen present and four absent. Okay, we do have a quorum. Next is the approval of the agenda. We have a motion by Commissioner Ferguson and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Any discussion? If not, please vote for approval or not. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
No.
Oh.
Just move on, we'll just...
Okay. Okay, next is the citizens' forum. Do we have anyone that's listed to speak tonight? Okay, then we'll move on to the commissioners' forum. Do we have a commissioner who has anything they'd like to discuss? If not, we're going to move on to the county mayor, attorney, finance advisor, invited guests, and speaker. Okay, then I'll let the mayor speak.
On April the 18th, that's your next commission meeting. As you may remember, we had a visit from Iperion, or you may still call them Hyperion. They were going to come back to our meeting and give some information they felt would be good news for the county. And so, to allow other people to be able to hear it in a better environment, we've made arrangements through Industrial Development Board to have a meeting at the high school gym on that day. And what I propose for you is that we actually have our meeting at the gym as well. So, if you're a mind of that, then the Iperion would be speaking from 4:30 to 5:45 at the gym, and then we would just roll into our meeting at 6:00 and finish up that meeting there. That way, it allows for more people in the community to be out and to hear that, which we hope to be the potential for some very good news coming in the future. So, to make all of that possible, and like I said, the Industrial Development Board will be coordinating that part of it with Iperion, and so it's not a public forum that we're hosting. It's just an opportunity for you to come out and hear that as well. And also, it will save them the time in our meeting to come and present. So, we want to give them a full hearing of everything they want to say, let the citizens of Benton County come out in live and in person, and be a part of that. And so, at the end of the meeting, through your other business, I've asked the chairman to have you consider moving your board meeting to that, to the high school. And I've already made arrangements that if you pass that, everything's good to go. If you don't pass that, well, they'll have the meeting there, and we'll just try to rush back and get here for this meeting. The second thing that... Yes, ma'am? Well, you will later at the end of the meeting.
Oh, okay.
I'm very pleased to tell you that we are working on two good industrial prospects who are interested in moving into our industrial park. And we are going through the process of putting them in touch with state people and whatnot, but we believe that this will eventually bear fruit for us in Benton County and has the potential of several jobs moving to this area to come out. So, couldn't be happier about that. And part of that came about because of the revitalization of our Chamber of Commerce, and part of that came about because of the development of our industrial development recruiter. So, having those people in place doing that job, I think, is already going to pay off dividends, because like I said, we have two, which I believe will come to bear fruit, assuming we follow the appropriate steps to ensure the greatest maximization of state grant funds and to bring in those buildings. But, oops, sorry, I'm proud to tell you about that now. Also, you may recall in your last meeting, you voted to appropriate money to fix the ceiling in this section of the courthouse in the lobby. And to facilitate that, now, we're not talking about in here, but out in the lobby, to facilitate that, we're going to need to close on Friday possibly. So, if the person that got the bid, if they get back with me and tell me they're going to come in on Thursday night, work all day Friday, and then be ready to go back in business on Monday. And so, if you hear that the courthouse is closing on Friday, that's because I won't know that until tomorrow, but if it... I've already talked to all the people in the courthouse, and they're okay with it. There's not going to be an impediment to court or anything. So, if you hear we're closed, it's simply because we're going to have scaffolding in the lobby, and we don't want the public exposed to dangerous conditions. So, that's... That will come to pass, and hopefully by the next Monday, everything will be great, and you'll have your new fans, the new ceiling out there. I keep hitting that mic. The new fans and the new ceiling out there will be something you can be proud of. And unless you have any questions, that's everything I had for my presentation.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, we do have a speaker in the House. They did not sign the sheet. They may not have known to sign it, but the sheriff sent word up here that we have someone from Fast Access that would like to come up here and speak. Whoever that is, you're welcome to come on up. Okay.
We got the podium right there, sir.
Very good, thank you, thank you very much. I'm Dr. Jonathan Curly from the Chattanooga area. I own Fast Access Healthcare, and we've been actually in conversations with the sheriff. Had the wonderful opportunity to come and take a look at your, the jail facility here. What we do is we provide inmate healthcare. I've been doing that for about 15 years now. I actually own urgent and primary care centers, and we also do correctional healthcare. So, nonetheless, we operate primarily in Tennessee, or actually, only in Tennessee, but like I said, we're from the Chattanooga area. So, it's a treat to come over here. I actually grew up in Sequoia County, a small town outside of Chattanooga. So, we very much enjoy the smaller-town atmosphere. That's where I'm comfortable with. But I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to the commissioners tonight. We've actually presented a contract proposal, and again, we've been doing this for a while for providing inmate healthcare. And just wanted the opportunity to come before you tonight and tell you a little bit about what we do, which is, we basically, we have the nurses, we have people that are on-call. We take a look at where your, the Tennessee Correctional Institute standards, make sure that your jail passes from a medical standpoint, and provide quality care. And in part of that process of providing quality care is to obviously help manage something that the state mandates that you require, but also, we want to make sure that we work as a good, as a partner with the county and with the sheriff's department to provide excellent care and also help with business. Some additional things that we do above just the healthcare is, our team helps the counties decipher some of the medical bills. Since that's what we do, we actually have a team that analyzes those things as well and helps every county, which unfortunately, you're in the business, basically in insurance business, but you don't have the same rights and privileges of a Blue Cross or a United or Medicare subsidiary. So, we take a look at the medical cost and help, you know, navigate those things for the sheriff and the department to try to make sure that you're getting the best benefit that you can. But overall, again, we partner with the sheriff's department to try to provide really good care. We work with the local county governments. We feel like we have a really good track record. From our standpoint, all of our facilities pass inspection, have actually done very, very well already with inspections this year. And most of it, we just look forward to the opportunity to talk with you. I appreciate the opportunity to come to talk tonight. Happy to answer questions. Feel very comfortable with the services that we provide, and we feel it an honor that the sheriff has made a recommendation for us. So, anyway, that's... I want to be respectful of your time, but happy to answer questions from what we do. And if anyone has anything, we'd be glad to answer those.
Just as an aside, the contract in consideration is, should already be on the desk of the county attorney for review, and upon his recommendations being everything, the meeting of the minds, if you will, then we'll present it to this body for consideration.
Any questions, Sheriff?
Chairman, I just want to say that we have been dealing with QCHC. They've been our medical provider for some time now. And there's a few things that are lacking, and if they've kind of dropped the ball on them, I'm not against them at all. They've done a pretty good job overall. Speaking with Dr. Curly and his entire staff on two or three different occasions, some of the surrounding counties as well have decided to go with Fast Access. The only difference in the cost is probably around $100 or $200 maximum is the only difference in the cost, and we're getting a whole lot more of what we need. They're willing to help us on some things with fiscal and things that we need for our employees, which saves us some money, and also on helping us with our psyche valves, things that they could help us with that we haven't been getting in the past. And also, this is a lot smaller country than QCHC and much easier to deal with than the R-Tennessee-based company. So, I strongly suggest that we take a good, long look at them, and I highly recommend them as, from dealing with QCHC for the last, I think, four or five years, I think it's time that we move on to a little bit better deal, and I believe it'll get a lot more bang for our buck, so to speak, for what we're getting. And I just want you to know, I highly recommend that we give them a contract for maybe a year, and if that's not working out, then we can go some, we can go back to where we was always, or we can extend our contracts out further than how required that county commission feels at the time. Mr. Curly has been very open and honest in time with his staff, and as I said, some of the surrounding counties that touch our county are also going with him at this time and that did have QCHC. So, we had a meeting in Decatur County with some of the other county officials. This is what we've come up with.
Sir, I don't normally spitball in the middle of a meeting, but I'm going to ask you if, just because of budgeting purposes, I haven't even run this past the county attorney yet, would you be amenable to perhaps a very short-term contract at the end of this fiscal year, just ended in June, so that when we pick up in July, if everything's working out well, we can just do it on the normal budget year as opposed to having a, in the middle of the year, a potential increase that we couldn't budget for?
I mean, definitely, take a look at that. We feel like we earn, you know, our business every year, every month, every day. So, as far as the short term, I understand that when your fiscal year ends and trying to get in line with that, it was my understanding that actually the contract would be coming up, that should be someone in line, but we're amenable to...
I haven't looked at the contract, so to say, I'm just spitting. I don't normally do that, but while I had you here, I thought I'd put you on the spot and make you answer yes.
No, no. I like you, it's good. But no, it's usually, that's fine. We would try to, we've done this before, so definitely is not unusual to try to work with your fiscal year and get in line with the contract, but I don't think that should be a problem.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Sure, sure, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, okay, we'll move on. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time, we appreciate it. Thank you.
We'll move on now to the approval of the minutes. Need a voice vote?
This isn't a voice vote.
Yeah, it's be a voice vote. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Report of the public utilities. We need a motion. Are we going to do a voice vote on that?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to also do a voice vote on that one. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Ferguson and a second by Commissioner Stokes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? I don't have none, so passes. Okay, now, we're down to our resolutions. Resolution number one is to reappoint four members to the T-R-R-D Board for a four-year term set to expire March 31st, 2026. We have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions? Okay, if none, please vote.
Errol, do you mind explaining abstaining?
I've got a conflict on my...
His wife is a current board member enough for reappointment.
Thank you. Passes 13 yes, one abstain. Okay, next is a resolution to appoint Michelle Wright to the T-R-R-D Board for a four-year term set to expire on March 31st, 2026. We have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Melton.
Ms. Wright is here, if anybody in the commission would like to see her. Stand up, Michelle.
Hi. Thank you for coming. Welcome.
Okay. I think we all know Michelle. Okay, all in favor, go ahead and vote, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 14 yes. Number nine is also a resolution to reappoint Jeff Bilal to the Industrial Board for a four-year term to expire on March 31st, 2026. We have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Jeff's not here, but does anyone have any...
He's served on the board for several years now.
Okay. If not, everyone vote, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 14 yes. Another appointment is Chris Medlin to the Industrial Board for a four-year term set to expire on March 31st, 2026. A motion was by Commissioner Ferguson and a second by Commissioner Hall.
Mr. Melton, are you trying to...
Mr. Medlin couldn't be here tonight, but I think many of you know him as a businessman in the community.
Okay, no discussion, everybody vote, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 14 yes. Next is to amend resolution number five in order for the resolution to show the proper breakdown of the budgeted funds. We have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Any questions about the amendment? If not, then we'll vote, please, for the amendment. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 14 yes. Number 12 on the agenda is resolution number six, which is authorizing the sheriff to end the current agreement with quality correctional healthcare and switch to fast-access correctional healthcare for the inmates' medical at the jail. We have a motion by Commissioner Melton and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Any questions or discussion?
Like the mayor said, that's going to be subject, it doesn't say it, but it's subject to reaching terms with the company if we do the...
Okay.
I just got it, just like, a little like, two hours ago.
Okay. The county attorney has not had time to look over the contract, so if we approve this, it will be upon the approval of...
Of the parties, just reaching agreement with the parties.
Yeah, with the county attorney.
Do you need to amend it to say that?
Yeah, we should amend it to say that or wait till next month.
I don't think the sheriff... Sheriff, is your, what's your opinion on waiting till next month? Do you need this done tonight?
It doesn't have to be, but we do have to give a 30-day notice to QCHC on the right to contract, but as the mayor was saying, if we can start this on July and get us back on fidget for a year, and that's what Dr. Curly also agreed on, so I don't think it has to be done tonight.
Okay. So, we can do this either way, if anyone wants to make an amendment to add to the resolution upon the county attorney looking over the contract?
Okay, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Rochelle, one, wants to talk, and two, she has asked for amendment.
That's fine. Dana can make the amendment, I'm happy with that.
So, you want me to ignore your amendment?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Is that why mine's not working?
Yeah, so we'll accept yours now, we need a second for the amendment.
Okay, then we need to amend it to state that it has to be approved by our county attorney.
Yeah, everybody has to agree, but yeah, the county attorney, they agree to, you know.
So, how exactly do you want the wording on that? Upon the agreement of both parties and the county attorney.
On the agreement of both parties and the county attorney.
Who made the second of that?
I'll second.
I think Mike Nunry had made the second.
Okay, so this is the, upon agreement of both parties and the county attorney. I know it's quick and dirty.
Okay, so we're going to vote on the amendment?
This is the amendment. Mr. King?
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 14 yes, to amend. Okay, next, we're going to be voted, voting on the resolution as we amended it. Okay, now, we're ready to vote, please.
Mr. Nunry?
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, 14 yes. As amended. Yes, that was the vote, then we did that. I'll wake you up next time. Okay, now, we're moving on to resolution number seven. The resolution is designating funds in the amount of $200,000 to help Benton County schools with the improvements to the football field with a memorandum of understanding outlining the usage of the field for soccer and minor-league football teams. We have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. We have any questions or discussion? Commissioner King?
It started out $100,000. Do we know why it went to $200,000?
We never started it.
No, sir, it was always 200.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I must have slipped there.
Commissioner Hill?
There was, at one time, there was a discussion of 20% of the projected budget, but we also felt that it was better to keep it as a fixed cost on the commission's side. There was also even talk of an extra amount of money being added to it based upon a potential bid, but if that proves to be an issue, they, you know, come back and solicit those extra funds. But given certain things that were going on with the budget at the time, we felt it was best just to keep it at the $200,000 level.
I got two more things. What about our memorandum of understanding? Do we have that signed yet?
We do not have it signed, and so what you're doing is that you're signaling to the school board that you're willing to do this, and that as soon as we get the memorandum of understanding, which will come back and be approved, that's technically when you'll be handing over the money upon the approval of that memorandum. But we're saying that we have an intent now to, we're serious about this, and that the school board can take whatever steps are necessary to begin bringing everything together and making it happen. So, you're taking the ambiguity of what the commission's going to do out of it, then we can come back with the memorandum after everybody has had a chance to look at it, you vote on that, and at that time, you will then be technically appropriating the money to the school board for the use of, for the, or the fixing up the field.
And the last thing, with all my, I've done some research, and according to what I've found, artificial turf fields aren't safer, NFL's going away from them because of the, a lot more injuries for artificial turf. I know our kids aren't NFL, but we were sold to this is going to be safer, and it's not safer.
Well, the turf itself is probably awash as to the degree of safety. What one of the issues is, and Mr. Arnold's here, who certainly researched it more than I, but one of the issues is that as the field goes through its life after being re-sodded and all this, that the divots in the field themselves get to be quite serious. And those are ankle breakers, leg breakers because of, over the life of the field. You would not have that, and I think that's the aspect to which they were referring would be safer, because there would be no means of, that would not occur with this type of field. Also, with the turf, it allows for the extra use of this property for the soccer and minor-league football, because again, without it, they struggle as it is to keep the grass maintained for the football season. And this would allow for a greater use of the land and the property. So, those are the issues. I don't think it was necessarily, they were saying that the turf is per se safer. I think they were just saying in terms of the divots, which are quite profound, pronounced now in the field right now, that they have to keep adding lots more sand back to them. That was the safer aspect. But again, Mr. Arnold's here, and I'm sure he could field that if I hadn't adequately covered your question for you, sir. Okay.
Commissioner Hill?
Okay, the memorandum of understanding will come before the commission before this is approved, correct?
Yeah, you're technically not approving the money tonight, you're just approving the fact that you're intent to do this, and that with the memorandum of understanding, that's when the check is written, so to speak, and that it's all taken care of.
Okay, I just want to make sure we'll see that.
But we wanted to, it was my intention to make sure that the school board knew that if you were serious, that they could get serious about it and look to see if there's something they wanted to do.
Well, after last month's meeting, I had a couple of parents call me, and they said, you know, please make sure that the memorandum covers a few things like use of the concession stand, that if the band does not want to provide concessions, then the groups that are playing on the field will be allowed. So, I want to make sure that all that different stuff is in there and clear so that, you know...
You will see all of it, just as the school board will see all of it. So, Mr. Florence and I will begin knocking that out with, and then make sure that both attorneys are all involved, and once we get the language the way we want to, come back for completion of that.
Commissioner Hicks, you're recognized.
Mr. Florence wants to speak.
Okay.
I just wanted you to explain to everybody where the money was coming from, because I've had a lot of people ask me if this is coming out of the unaside fund balance, and I've told them no, but I'd like for them to hear from you. and I've told them no, but I'd like for them to hear from you.
They, this money is not coming out of the unassigned school balance, my joke is, you're writing the check for it, thank you, Mr. Hicks, but actually, the money is coming from the, at one time, the county sold some timber, and it was always promised that that money would go for the soccer fields, and so there's approximately $110,000 of that money, that's gonna be used for this, and then the remainder, the $90,000 will come from the sale of property that we had earlier this year, where we made a little over 200,000, so we'll take the, that's where the, our, our part will come from, is the timber sale as promised, and the remaining 90,000 will come from the sale of that land, but at no point will this be a burden to the taxpayers, this will not come from property taxes, this will not be from the unassigned fund balance, it will all be from funds generated by the county through certain procedures that avail themselves to us. Mr. Florence, I think.
I just wanted to let you, King, we had talked to Tennessee Risk Management, and they hundreds, installed hundreds of these fields throughout the state in the last 10 years, and they said they had not noticed an increase in injuries, because we called to say, you know, would this affect our insurance for our kids, and they said no, so you can read, but I thought that was important to hear, that our insurance said that, you know, as many as these installed throughout the state of Tennessee, that they had not increased their insurance, because they had no, they had noticed a difference anyway.
Commissioner Fowler, you're recognized.
Rochelle and Mr. Hicks, one go out of it. Another thing the memorandum do, does, will tell us what times that the soccer and the minor league football plays to be right on the field, because that's the main concern of investing, soccer and the great. So with that memorandum.
If this doesn't, a- a- as I've stated in our committees, if this doesn't take care of the, the county's promise about the soccer and minor league football field, there's not a, there's not a real driving reason for us to participate, so we were just trying to, to take care of a, of an obligation for hundreds of kids.
No schedule.
And give them a place to go and to, to work and to play.
Thank you.
Commissioner King, would you like to say something else?
I didn't, I just wanted to let the commission know, the Big Sandy High School boys do not have a field to play on in Big Sandy, and they're having to travel, they can't have any home games, and I talked with the city today, and they're, they're planning on putting some chain link up, and a few other thing dugouts and stuff like that, and, and I would like to ask, maybe we can come back here when we know how much, and, because they gotta have some dirt work, and they don't have money to do that, and I would like to ask the commission at that time to see if we can't give them some money also, because it is a school, I know the city of Big Sandy owns the field, but the high school and the junior high play there.
When you get those figures, sir, just bring them, and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Arnold's in the back, would you like to say something before we move on?
I, I will say that I have done extensive research, and I do agree with NFL fields, that there hasn't been some research that said that, that perhaps they are, the grass is safer, but they go through a rigorous weekly approval process to make sure that their field is flat, and the reason that they're more safe for high school fields is because they don't have to go through the process of making sure that they are flat and all that, on a, on a weekly basis, from a certified field perspective, and that also being said, even, and I apologize, I wasn't quite ready, but I'm pretty certain that 10 out of the last 12 NFL fields that were built in the United States, they put turf on them, so even though these, there is some things out there that says that it's not as safe, that, that they still put turf on NFL fields, because it is a, it is a benefit to, to the field that's playing on them. The real benefit, obviously, though, is the usability of the field, not just being able to use it on Friday nights, but be able to use it for all sports, many different sports and throughout the year.
Okay, anyone else? If not, then it's time, we can go ahead and vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries 14 yes. Next is resolution number eight, which is number 14 on our agenda, it's a resolution to amend the language of the previous resolution by removing the county mayor's authority to acquire properties and giving the full legislative body the authority to approve any and all purchases or leases of real estate in the name of Benton County. We have a motion by Commissioner Ferguson and a second by Commissioner Stokes, this is up for discussion, Commissioner Hopper?
I'd like to make an amendment to that, I'd like to change my name from Hooper to Hopper.
I will second that motion.
Okay. No, I don't think so.
Yeah, I didn't think so. I thought the plan had something to do with that.
We'll make, I don't think that that should be in the form of an amendment, but we will correct the spelling of your name before this goes into the minutes. Okay, is that, are you happy with that, Mr. Hopper?
Oh, I can be happy with that.
Okay.
I love the language, it says that the resolution shall be spread upon the minutes of the Board of County Commissioners, so before we spread it, we'll get that, we'll get that P in there, just the way it needs to be.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
I'm looking at paragraph three, which says our mayor had went beyond his scope of authority, I don't know when that was done, what property was purchased, and why it's just now coming to light, and I'd also like the county attorney's opinion on this.
Okay, I don't know if anyone here has the information with them on the properties that were bought, I do, if you want to allow me to show you, I have copies of the deeds that were.
I know it was bought, but how, how did it get out of scope of it? That's what I want our attorney to speak about.
Okay.
Roseanne has it, I think Roseanne ought to go on and speak.
Anybody can there, may go ahead, Roseanne.
Okay, is the full commission okay with me explaining?
Yes.
Okay, on the res, previous resolution, if you've noticed, that it says, "The acquisition shall be made as soon as practical determined by the county mayor." Number two is where it says, "The properties," talking about the properties at that moment, "shall be those attached in exhibits A, B, and C," which were projects one, two, and three. Okay, projects one, two, and three were the Lockhart Building, the land attached to that for the farmer's market, and the exhibits, and exhibit building, and the property at Big Sandy, those were prop, were the properties one, two, and three. So, since then, there was property made, purchased, that was located behind the jail, I'd have to dig through this and find the owner's name, the property behind the jail that you're all aware of, that was purchased, and it didn't come before the full commission, and the other piece of property since that resolution was the property at the Patsy Cline Memorial Site that was purchased, so those are the two properties that, that you're speaking of, so.
But why is it just now coming before the commission bought it, or purchased a couple of years ago, or long?
Well, I can't answer why it's just now coming before the county commission, but there is a resolution sponsored by these people that just wants to put the authority back in the hands of the county commission when it comes to buying property.
I don't have any problem with that, but I do have a problem waiting two or three years, and then bring it just now.
I think it's been discussed for some time, that the county commission.
We just caught it right then.
We're not saying that anything was wrong, we're just saying that now, the county commission, the ones that sponsor the resolution, I'm not speaking for anyone else that may vote, I'm speaking for the sponsors of the resolution, wants the authority back in the hands of the county commission to purchase property.
I agree totally.
And, and that's all it is, that's the whole intent of the resolution.
Well, I didn't like that third paragraph in there, we could've put that back in there without trying to call somebody out, two or three years after something had been done.
Does anyone have any comments, or any more discussion about this?
I don't think we're calling anybody out.
No, they're not calling anybody out.
Make a third paragraph then.
Well, I think that is the, the explanation of the reason for the resolution, is because there, there was property bought in the past, so that's the reason for the resolution.
I suppose that the, to put it this way, there is some wiggle room in the way the original resolution was worded, that seemed to allow for different interpretations, it appears that the mayor, Lashley, felt that it was construed one way, that the members of this body who have brought this resolution believe that it's construed the other way. They are now taking remedy to correct the language and put in place what this legislative body, who has the authority to buy and purchase land, wants it to be. If this is a question of criminal intent, I'm sure we could call the district attorney in here and have him investigate it, but that hasn't been done, that has never been discussed in my presence, so it's just a question of, of getting the language the way this legislative body wants it, whether it's two years down the road, or three years down the road, it makes no difference, this is just correcting language that should be in place anyway, the mayor, whoever it is, should never have the ability to buy property outside of the scope of legislative oversight.
And so, the resolution was originally, we voted on in pass, I'd like our county attorney to give us an opinion where our mayor has done anything wrong with it.
This is not a question of wrongdoing, because that would be a legal, that would be a legal finding and determination, this is just simply a question of, of clarifying language in a resolution.
It says he.
He acted outside the scope of the authority, because of vagary in the language, okay? If it had said that he had acted illegally, then you might have an issue to warrant the county attorney's opinion on this, but as it is, it's just simply a matter of clarifying language, that you have said, just this day, that you're in agreement with.
Well, I'm in agreement with the county commission approving anything done, but I don't like somebody being called out, and made us like they've done something that they shouldn't have been doing.
Well, I think we have an informed citizenry, they can look and see what they think for themselves.
Whatever. Moving right along. You want, Tom, you want to give an opinion on that?
Well, you're recognized, if you'd like to speak.
The chair and I have spoke about this beforehand, as Mr. Shannon just said, there's a difference, he said the terms were vague, one side of view is one thing, the other side of view is the other thing, I did recommend to not put that phrase in a resolution, this resolution, because from attorney's perspective, that is making a legal conclusion, that that was in a, that was outside the scope, and if we're saying that there's two different interpretations, I, I never want the commission to put a legal conclusion in any resolution, as you actually know that, but you're, you're the voting body, not me, so whatever you all think's appropriate, and whatever the ramification is, we'll deal, we'll deal with that potential down the road.
Why don't we amend that, to take that third paragraph out, hold on that while we vote on the resolution.
That's up to the, that's up to the commission, if you would, someone wants to make a motion, and then we'll need a second, and then we can vote on it.
I make a motion, take the third paragraph out.
Tell them to press the button. Press your button. To amend. All right, need a second for the amendment?
Okay, the floor's open for a second to hit Mr. Miller's amendment. Okay, I don't see a second, Mr. Miller, so that fails.
No record.
Okay. So the amendment did not receive a second, so we can't move forward with the amendment, so now we're back to the resolution as it is written.
Stand by, I want to say we're documenting that.
Okay.
Putting it on the record, you know. Wait back on the original. Yeah. Resolution?
Yes, and just a second, as soon as they have it written up over here for the minutes.
There you go, okay, are you ready for a vote now?
Okay, now we're ready to vote, okay, now you're voting on this resolution as it is written. Anyone, anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries 14 yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Now they excuse, I've just had a immediate family member that passed away, and five seconds left in me, and I'm gonna leave, I'll leave my mother, I appreciate y'all's prayers.
We're sorry for your loss, and yes, you are excused. Okay, next on the agenda is number 15, which is resolution number nine, is to designate and appropriate $800,000 from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act funds for the expansion of broadband internet across Benton County. We have a motion by Commissioner Ferguson and a second by Commissioner Stokes to approve this.
In case some of you did not hear, we have two who have solicited, or will be soliciting funds from the state, and what we're able to do with this $800,000 is to turn it into probably over $8 million in broadband connectivity, so I think this is money well spent, the two partners, if you're interested, are TEC, who's already done a lot in our community, and as you well know, Charter, which has been in Benton, Camden, rather, has bought out Benton County cable, and they're looking to enhance their offerings here and in that area in which Benton County cable was authorized, so we hope to see in, in the future, some very good things come from this money.
Commissioner Ferguson?
This was approved by budget and it's classified agreement.
Okay. Commissioner Hill?
Yes, has it been determined where within the county that these expansions will be? Because a lot of people, the last expansion that went out, felt like it really didn't reach the areas that needed it the most, I was curious if they knew exactly where they were taking.
I, I have, for TEC, I have, if anybody wants to come to the office, they, they were kind enough to share with me their maps, so that I could have them, because I have that question asked very frequently, is it coming my way, is it gonna be here, so I can show anybody on the, on the maps as to where their, their proposals are to expand to, I do not have such with Charter, but I'm sure that I could, if you pass this tonight, that we can get what they, they plan on doing with that, so that people will know that as well.
Would that be something that you could put on the Benton County Facebook page, so that citizens could just.
It's not my data, I don't mind talking to people one-on-one, but I'd have to ask about, because that could be some proprietary information about where they're expanding and market area research, so. and market area research. So I don't feel comfortable just making that statement, but I'll be happy to show anybody individually. But I will ask them if they could come up with something that they would put out on their Facebook page, so that people can go and see that. That way, they're, they're releasing their own information.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hopper?
Yes, this $8 million you're talking about from grants, is that, this $800,000, is it going to make a difference whether we give it to them or not, as to where they get those grants?
It actually does make a difference, and the reason for is because when they have community partners, when they have county partnership and whatnot, it puts, it elevates them in the matrix of getting the money. So our participation at the rates that, and these are the rates that they ask for. So our participation at these rates, we believe, will make them a very attractive grant recipient through the state of Tennessee.
I just have a problem with this, because we've got to pay for this. Individuals that get this service has got to pay for it. We don't get a discount or anything. And this is basically coming out of tax, our tax money.
I, I, I do agree with that, but you would never get it without the grant money. It, the expense of running this fiber optic connectivity cable is unbelievable. So you would, this grant money is making it available for you. Regrettably, there is a cost on the backside that they will have to recoup, but you would never have gotten this but for that grant money. We don't have enough people, I would think, for them to come in and do everything at cost, for their cost, and try to make that back up with a profit model. I think they have to have some help in infrastructure, and that's why the federal government and the state government is partnering and putting in, the state of Tennessee alone is putting in $400 million of their ARPA funds to allow this to happen across the state. The federal government has put in, well, I imagine it's in the billions of dollars total, through a variety of projects that are coming our way. One I didn't mention, but it's not part of this, is that Western Kentucky Telephone Telegraph, something to that effect, is coming down the river corridor from Big Sandy toward Eva. So that will also be another projection of buildout as well, but that's not part of these funds. But they got, they got a rural grant much earlier that they're going to be building out along that river corridor.
I know $800,000 would go a long ways to alleviate some of our financial problems.
Yes, it would, but the other side, just to, the flip of this, is that it allows for our students to have access to internet at home. It allows for private industry, private entrepreneurship to thrive and develop, which generates sales tax. And so we have a variety of good reasons as well. So, but your point is well made, sir. Your point is well made.
Okay, Commissioner Fowler?
Yeah, TEC and Charter will work together, so they ain't kind of doubling up.
Well, no, they can't double up. There will not be any doubling up. That, you can rest assured of. But Charter will be doing its thing, and TEC will be doing its thing.
I mean, like it's supposed to be broadband for both counties, will we have Charter and TEC all in one area at one time?
No, you will not have them overlapped in an area. So you can, you will either have Charter or TEC, and, and, because that's just the way the grant is. You can't have grant money going in. Now, if they're privately building out, if they want to use their money, they can go anywhere they want to. But if they're using grant money, then they can't go into areas that are already served or already grant recipient is receiving money for.
Back to Mr. Hopper's statement. Mayor Shannon may correct me, but I don't know that the ARPA money could be used for county debt.
Oh, no, it can't be used for debt. No, no, no.
Or to help, I don't know what his statement was, something about to help the county with our expenses.
Well, it would help with the sheriff's department, the EMA, and the fire department. It's all needing funds. I'm just saying that it would help for that. And it's, you know, it's only a one-time thing, so it wouldn't affect our maintenance ever.
Anyone else got any questions about this resolution? I think Mayor Shannon was just fixing to say something.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, then please vote on this resolution. Anyone wish to change their vote? We have 13 yes, one no. A motion passes. Number 16 on the agenda is resolution 10, which is a resolution to transfer funds in the amount of $2,287.39 in order to purchase a new printer for the Economic Community Developer. We have a motion by Commissioner Ferguson and a second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions or?
I'm going to explain the cost of this. Because she will be dealing with printing out maps for people, this is a ultra-wide format printer. It'll print paper in color up to 13 inches by 19 inches. So this is allowing her to be able to print off those maps for people coming in and mailing them out to people. So that's why this was a little bit more than your normal printer, to allow her to have the capability of what she needed to meet her specific responsibilities. And so, when you, at one point, somebody asked why is it so expensive? Well, that's why. It's a, it's a high-end, wide-format printer that will allow her to get the, print out she needs for potential clients.
Anyone else? Any other questions? If not, then we're ready to vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries 14 yes. Number 17 is resolution 11, which is to budget funds in the amount of $9,324.50 within the animal shelters budget to cover part-time personnel for the remainder of the fiscal year. We have a motion by Commissioner Ferguson and a second by Commissioner Hicks. Any questions? If none, then everyone, please vote. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries 14 yes. Number 18, which is resolution 12, is to budget funds received from donations during the month of February in the amount of $789.70 within the animal shelters budget. Motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Any questions? If none, then everyone vote, please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries 14 yes. Number 19, which is resolution 13, is to budget funds received from donations in the amount of $198 within the senior citizens budget. We have a motion by Commissioner Ferguson and a second by Commissioner Hicks. Any questions? If not, everyone vote, please. Carrie Fehr? Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries 14 yes. Resolution 15 is to budget funds received from USDA in the amount of $10,500 within the school's budget.
Pinky skipped one.
I thought I did too, but I couldn't find it. I skipped number 14. Okay, I'm sorry. Number 14 is a resolution to budget funds from the revenues collected during the month of February in the amount of $7,407.85 within the sheriff's budget. A motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Hall. Any questions? If none, then please vote. Carrie Fehr? Anyone wish to change their vote? 14 yes. Motion carries. Now we're back to number 15 that I read too soon. It's to budget funds received from the USDA in the amount of $10,500, $10,500 within the school's budget. Motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Any questions about it? If none, please vote. Okay, next is resolution 16. Oh, I'm sorry. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries 14 yes. Okay, now, resolution 16 is to appropriate funds in the amount of $4,050 from the jail workhouse courthouse litigation tax reserve in order to make necessary upgrades to enhance the video arraignment capabilities between the courts and the jail. Motion is by Commissioner Ferguson and seconded by Commissioner Stokes. Commissioner Ferguson?
It was recommended by budget and classified as new one.
Okay. Any questions? If none, please vote. Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries 14 yes. Number 17, resolution number 17, is a resolution to appropriate funds in the amount of $80,000 from the unassigned fund balance within the county general fund to cover the expenses of inmates' medical claims in the Benton County Jail for the remainder of the fiscal year. We have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Hall. Okay, this is up for discussion. I think in budget it.
It was not recommended, and if I'm not mistaken, what he said, he was needing to see if he can find it in budget, because we feel that there is room in that budget to cover this to the end of the fiscal year.
Do we know if anybody checked on, in his budget to see if that was able to do so?
The area that, that would have to be used, if, if, if any could be used at all, would be in unused salaries, and those would require the sheriff's permission. His regular expenditure lines are pretty tight with budgeted versus expenses. So regrettably, with the loss, we can't ask him right now, but we don't want to burden him with that particular event this moment, but. This account is in the red right now. And what I would encourage you to do is to, regrettably, Ms. Travis couldn't be here either, but I would encourage you to amend this to, I think, let me check real quick, but I think $20,000 would be enough to cover it, and then that way we can look at the rest for later. But let me see if I.
Do I know whether he has the funds in his budget? Is that what you're asking?
How much is the, how much are the bills right now?
Oh, there's at least $20,000 in bills that need to be paid. The problem we have been having is, I don't know if everyone's aware, that the opioid epidemic has been pretty bad, and a lot of these bills are because when people are being arrested, they're almost overdosed, and they come to jail, and their condition is serious enough that they have got to go to the hospital. Not taking them to the hospital would risk them being deceased. And we have just had such.
It's criminal neglect to not, to not provide for them, so.
And our hands are tied. I mean, you know, we have to care for them, but they're coming into jail with these issues. You know, they're being arrested for domestics, or DUI, or selling drugs, or doing, you know, whatever they're coming to jail for, and they're already, they're already in like an overdosed situation. And when they're brought to jail, we have pretty much no choice but to seek, you know, it's beyond our scope just to watch them and keep an eye on them. They need to be in an environment and.
Let's, let's consider this, then, as a, as a stopgap measure. Let's amend this, if you're willing, to $25,000. That will more than likely cover the debt, give us, buy us a little bit of time, allow the sheriff to do some soul-searching on his, on what's he's got left in his budget, and allow for, you know, a meeting halfway on, on this problem that we do have to take care of. And so I think that would be a very appropriate, as I said, stopgap measure to get us to the April meeting. So my recommendation is, if somebody wishes to put it in form of a motion, that you amend this to $25,000 as opposed to the $80,000 to cover the existing debt and to provide a little bit of, of cash flow in that amount.
You've already amended it. We're working on it right now.
You did a good job, too, Commissioner Ferguson. You did a great job. Give yourself a piece of chocolate.
$25,000?
Yes.
And we will look at that, and I'm sure he will get with the mayor initially about where that money could be, and come back next month with that.
Are we ready?
We're ready for a vote.
We're voting on the amendment, which we're changing it from the funds of $80,000 to $25,000. All in favor of the amendment? Please vote.
Ms. Fehr?
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries 14 yes. Okay, now we will vote on the resolution as it was amended.
Mr. Fowler?
Anyone wish to change their vote? Amendment carries 14 yes. Okay, that was our last resolution. Now we're down to number 24 on the agenda is reporting the notaries. We have Haley Oatsfall, Pamela Badjan, Lois Ann Abbott, Karen Scott, and Donna Lalou Mendor. I don't think I said that right. But anyway, it's spelled L-A-L-U-M-E-N-D-E-R. So. That's our notaries. Now. Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries 14 yes. For the notaries. Okay, we're down to any other business, and this is where Mayor Shannon wants us to vote to move our meeting next month. As he explained earlier, if everyone is in favor of moving the meeting to the high school.
I have not spoken to them in the last few days, but I have already spoken to them about this, and the IDB board is, is working with them about this. And as I have already said, I've, I've already contacted Mr. McDowell at the high school, and so we're good. If, if you vote for this, then it's all good. and so we're good, if, if you vote for this, then it's all good.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do we need to make a motion or can we just vote on it?
I think someone make a motion.
If you, give us just one second, I'm gonna read up to where there's need to make a motion.
You don't think she wants to do it?
Don't make she want in favor of it, but now don't let y'all, me influence y'all.
Okay, so this is the resolution, I guess you'd say, to move April's meeting to the Camden High School.
Well, I'm just going on the last thing I spoke to her. She was very, she was very happy at the time.
Well, she may have changed her mind.
She may have, so. We can't, we can't unring this bell and, and we're just, hey, we'll go out to the high school and you get to see the new floor and everything else they got out there. Be wonderful time for you to go inspect that property.
Shoot some hoops.
Shoot some hoops too. We'll go for three, slide it in with the hockey puck too.
Okay, have we got the motion to move? By Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Ferguson to move our April meeting to the high school gym. The regular meeting will still begin at 6 o'clock.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll make sure that it's in the paper so that everyone will know that the meeting has been moved and where and the time.
And we should put it right here on this thing.
Okay.
No, just for clarity, the first part with Iperion, that's, that's really not got anything to do with us.
No, no, we, we, to keep that out of the, the legal loop of public forums and all that kinda jazz, we're just letting the IDB host Iperion. Some from 4, they're hosting an event from 4:30 to 5:45 and that way they wouldn't be taking any of your time here and protracting, even though it'd be, you know, it might be wonderful news, I don't know what it is, but it may be wonderful news, you may wanna hear it, but that way this meeting is not being protracted. But since you would want to be part of that and hear it, that way you can just go right on into your meeting without having everybody rush back to the courthouse.
Okay, so everyone understand?
Mr. Hall?
Mr. Hall?
What time they gonna start?
Anyone else? Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries 14 yes.
Hopefully this will be a very nice event. Thank you for your consideration in this.
I'd like to say before we go, as Commissioner Hill mentioned earlier, I think we all need to keep Mayor Lashley and his family in our prayers from the loss of his mother. Anyone got anything else?
We need to add Kenny to that.
Yeah, and, and the sheriff. He stated he had a immediate, did he say immediate family?
Like a mother.
Okay, yeah, a real close member, so we'll remember him also. Anything else? We need a motion to adjourn?
We got it.
And a second?
We got it.
Well, then we're adjourned.
All in favor?
Uh.
Passes. We're good.
Okay.